I'm going to call the June 20, 2022 meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education to order at 7:05 PM. With a reminder to all those watching and participating remotely to kindly mute your microphones to avoid any background noise. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting consistent with Sections 149-153 of Connecticut Public Act 22-23. The, or 22-3, I'm sorry. The public may attend both in person and electronically via WebEx. This meeting is being recorded and the recording will be available on the district website. At the June 8 meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Stephen Lawrence was appointed to fill the vacancy on the Woodbridge Board of Education created by the resignation of Dr. David Ross. And so tonight I would like to welcome Stephen to our board. Happy to have you at our table, Stephen. I'll now call the roll. If you're attending remotely, please unmute when I call your name. Maria Madonick?
Present.
Sarah Beth Delpreet is not here. Jay Daya?
Here.
Brooke Hopkins?
Here.
Stephen Lawrence? Michael Strampler? Erin Williamson?
Here.
Attending virtually, Marcia. And I'm Lynn Piazek here. Staff in attendance this evening includes Dr. Jonathan Budd, Superintendent, Mr. Richard Hewat, Interim Director of Business and Operations, Virtually, Ms. Annalisa Sherman, Principal. I believe virtually, Mr. Jimmy Sapia, Assistant Principal, and Ms. Marcia DiGennaro, Clerk of the Board. Welcome, everyone. So I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have recognition of TAP Student Award recipients. Dr. Budd?
Ms. Sherman will speak a little later to the, about the outstanding grade six graduation last Friday. But at the grade six graduation, among other great celebrations, was the opportunity to recognize these six grade six students. They were selected by the grade six teaching team as representing a great, great synthesis of academics, community service, service to the Beecher community, and so forth. So it's my privilege to commend publicly to you these six students, all of whom are happily enjoying summer vacation at this point. But when you see them this summer, please pay us careful congratulations to Carmella Brown, Sean Choi, Noah Hutchinson, Anna Maloney, Marina Serapiglia, and Victoria Shafir for all they've done to represent Beecher Road School and the Woodbridge School District so well over their past years at Beecher. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Budd. And we congratulate on behalf of the board, those students for their fine accomplishments and contributions to our school. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Any emails or letters that have been received as board correspondence prior to 4:00 PM today have been posted in Board Book. I don't believe there are any that I'm aware of. Is that correct, Marcia?
I do not have any. I did not receive any, Lynn. I did not receive any.
No, I've got a shaking head. Thank you, Marcia. Public comment? If there's public comment virtually, if you would raise your hand. I don't see anyone, do you? Okay. I see no one raising their hand for public comment. We have no one in person for public comment, so we'll move on. Board of Selectmen update. I don't believe we have Ms. McCrevan on this evening. Ms. Heller, do you have anything you wish to say this evening? Can I hear her?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I just want to wish everyone a happy and safe summer. I wasn't prepared to give remarks this evening. I don't know where Sheila is, apologies.
That's okay, but thank you for your good wishes.
Yeah, and it was a wonderful collaboration all year and we got through it. And best wishes to Dr. Budd, if I haven't said it enough.
Thank you, Beth. And on behalf of the students and the faculty and the board, I want to thank you and the Board of Selectmen for your support this year. And also personally for your participation in sixth grade graduation. It was very much, as always, appreciated by our families and the community.
It was wonderful. I enjoyed it.
It was wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. PTO update. Joy?
Good evening, everyone. The last month has been a flurry of activities and the busiest, I think, all of us have been in over two years.
Okay, are you unmuted?
Yes.
Thank you, Erin. Give us just a minute, we're trying to unmute. Joy, if you want to come sit here. You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. The last month has been a flurry of activities and the busiest, I think, all of us have been in over two years. We had our most successful quasi-night with BCS ever on May 20. Over 1,100 tickets were sold. We had beautiful weather and it was wonderful to see our friends with so much excitement in their eyes. We celebrated Arts Week, our 15th year of Arts Week. The theme was Trees, May 23 through May 27. We had Arts Week t-shirts that arrived May 16 that were distributed. We had students with, all the classes had yoga with Bill featuring the tree pose. There was a whole school performance by musical guest Sirius Coyote. It was also a well-attended arts night with art studios on May 26. And the school-wide art installation of Beecher Family Tree Canopy of Leaves is on site. See if you, please come and see it if you haven't seen it. It is amazing. Special thanks go to Vicky Burford for executing this latest masterpiece. We also had some special tree installation and tree work done by Woodbridge Estate Cares Richard Lewis on May 17. He removed two dead trees, one down south and one up north. The larger tree down south was brought to us repurposed into a bench next to our newly planted tree. The installation of the two trees and the bench happened with our kindergarten classes, who will be caring for our newly planted Weeping Purple Fountain Beech trees with their families for the next couple of years as they become fully established. We took pictures with them and we'll take another one when they are sixth graders to show how much the trees and the children have grown. I feel very lucky to have been a part of this. And a article was included in the Memorial Day issue of the Woodbridge Town News. We had plaques made commemorating the trees and the bench. We are happy to report that we were finally able to dedicate our climbing wall to Logan Testa at the triathlon here on June 11. We installed a plaque and had a private dedication with Logan's family before the start of the triathlon. May Logan's memory live on and his bravery and strength be an example to all of us. Sixth grade graduation activities were also a huge success. Yearbooks were distributed the day before graduation so that the children could sign them with their friends and their teachers. T-shirts were given out to be worn at the sixth grade field day with BCS on May 25 and for the whole school field day on June 13. We had an amazing pool party at the Woodbridge Club on the 15th. We had plenty of volunteers, a DJ, lots of food, pizza, chips, and cake, as well as various lawn games, and everyone had a wonderful time. The graduation ceremony on Friday, the 17th, was also lovely. Thank you for making this rite of passage so special for our sixth graders. Sixth grade graduation gift is substantial this year since we are combining the years 2019 through 2022. We're calling those the COVID years. And the gift will be a kiln for the North Art Room. The PTO is giving gift cards also to Home Depot, to our hard-working custodial staff for all of their help this year. They've been amazing. I want to take a few minutes to talk about something that I'm so excited, and the PTO is so excited that we were able to do this. It's called the STEAM Dream. In celebration of 50 years of PTO at Beecher Road School, we are gifting $50,000 worth of amazing items to enhance STEAM programming. We asked for wish lists to infuse STEAM in our library, technology, STEAM in art areas of the school. We asked everyone to dream big and they came back with amazing stuff for our students. These are things that would never be included in the budget and will truly enrich all grade-level curriculum in the areas of science, technology, engineering, the arts, and math. For those of you who are newer to the Beecher Road School community, the PTO had several successful fundraising years, which included huge Halloween hoots, two Boosterthon fun runs, and quasi-nights before the pandemic hit. Since 2020, the PTO could not spend the monies for the enrichment activities and enhancements since COVID restricted what we could do at the school. As stewards of that money, we saved it and had many conversations about how we could best use the money to be most lasting and impactful for our school. We want to thank the administration, the library, the tech department, facilities, art department, and the business office, and MAG for all of your work researching items for the PTO to purchase. These items will provide resources and enrichment for our school community for years to come and can even be used for after-school and summer programming. Here are some of the items we will be purchasing. In art, we will be doing a pottery wheel. We'll be getting a Bose music system so they can do art and be inspired by the music. Color printer, iPads with Procreate and Logitech crayons for digital art-making, and a kiln for the North Art Room. For the STEAM lab, we are refurbishing the greenhouse and creating raised garden beds outside. For tech, we're getting a 3D printing lab. We're going to be getting enhancements to the current BRS news lab. We're also going to be doing a robotics lab, which is very, very exciting. Library, we're buying items that will help create a space of multisensory learning and enrichment where students work cooperatively, as students engaging with various building materials, circuits, engineering, math games, team-building exercises, and creative art in class and at other times throughout the day. MAG, we're doing a kitchen redo, something like a stainless steel restaurant-type sink, induction cooktop, food storage and prep. I think that's going to be an ongoing project and we're still discussing those details. Maria and I will be ordering all of the items we have links for in the next couple of weeks and have them shipped directly to the school. MAG's kitchen redo, the STEAM lab, greenhouse, and raised garden beds, and the sixth grade graduation kiln will take longer to pull together, but monies have been set aside for those projects. I just want to share with you briefly also what the library wrote about the $11,000 we are spending there. We are incredibly overwhelmed by the generosity of the BRS PTO and cannot wait to breathe new life into our library media center. With the funds provided, we hope to make the library a hub of multisensory learning, cooperative play, and engaging STEAM activities. Libraries have recently gone through a renaissance and have become far more than a place to simply check out books. Libraries are a place to engage in a variety of activities and experiences cross-curricularly. In the library, students do not simply come in for library class lessons. They look forward to time in our space to work cooperatively with peers at our makerspace, a cooperative play area, and center for creativity. Through this PTO funding, we will be able to create centers for students to engage with various building materials, engineering, math games, team-building exercises throughout the day. Just to give you a little image of what that might look like. A small group of students are engaged in shared book under a new arched reading area, talking about characters and preparing to do a puppet show. Another team is building a fort out of foam beams, discussing the best engineering tactic to hold up the roof. Older students are taking apart electronics, doned, and safety goggles, and using screwdrivers, figuring out what makes things work and exploring technology. A few students are crafting and drawing at the art tables, making items for a local shelter and nursing home. Pairs of students are scattered around playing math games and discussing the best strategies for their approach. A group of students is building on the Lego wall while talking about their day, socializing and creating simultaneously. Two students are creating a marble run and marble roller coaster, exploring science and engineering. The options are endless. The library is and should be the very heart of the school, a safe place for all students, especially those who may feel on the outskirts of their classmates. A place of warmth and culture, a place of joy and excitement, a place where learning and fun mingle to foster literacy and steam. Last but not least, I want to thank you all for everything you do for our students and in our Beecher community. It has been a pleasure working with you for the past seven years. I know how challenging the past couple of years have been for everyone, but I truly feel so encouraged that these things are finally, that things are finally moving in a positive direction. Have a wonderful summer.
Joy, we thank you so much for seven years of service to Beecher Road School, to the PTO, but most especially to the kids. The support that the PTO gives the school is amazing. Your leadership has really been outstanding during a most difficult time for everybody, and you made it work for the PTO. So thanks so much for everything. Okay. All these goodbyes, so hard. Joy, did you walk away with one of my papers perhaps? Oh, no, never mind. I got it. It's on the back. Thank you. Consent agenda. The minutes from the May 4 and May 11 special meetings, as well as the May 17, 2022 regular meeting, are included in this evening's consent agenda along with budget narrative, budget summary, and detailed financial report for 2021, 2022. Is there anything the board wishes to extract from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Maria Madonick, seconded by Jay Daya. All those in favor? Erin, Erin, do I have a, yes, thank you. And are you going to abstain? Stephen Lawrence is going to abstain, Marcia? Otherwise, it's unanimous. Thank you. Reports. Superintendent's report. Dr. Budd, you're on.
Sure, I'm going to share this. Erin, can you hear me this way?
Madonick, I can't hear you.
Okay. Describe this. How about that, Erin? Okay, so I'm sharing a presentation that's also in Board Book this evening. Just going to get it slightly larger on my screen. We have a standing item. Ask the superintendent to report monthly on Safe Return. And that item has been with us, well, the entire year. So here you have the year in review, if you will. We were fully in person for all Beecher students this entire year. And through a negotiated agreement with the WEA, remote learning was possible for quarantined students for most of the year. Our total confirmed COVID-19 cases in the BRS community, which again means that someone was positive and was at Beecher during what's defined as their infectious period. The total of all the sums you've been given so far is around 372, give or take one, let's say. Then we should remind ourselves that nearly all of our staff are fully vaccinated and over 70% of our students, probably nearer to 75% these days. We ended the year with a little over 120 students participating in weekly testing for COVID and over 25 staff members. Those are, as I think everybody here knows, but I'll say it in case there are new public watching, the people who do the testing come in from outside providers. We give them the space and the time. Our district office has offered many COVID rapid self-test kits for free this year. And if you're listening and need a few more, you let us know because we have several left. You will remember that if we're looking at the year in review, we started the year with contact tracing, a pretty vigorous activity. First, it was reduced, then it was eliminated. Quarantine length for COVID-positive students was shortened. And as I'm sure you on the board will remember, we started the year with masking as a requirement and have ended it, ended the year with it as a choice. So those are some details in general about our COVID response. And we've reported also on mitigation strategies. And it made sense to me to group these into three categories here. I would, I would anticipate that the first group of strategies will continue at least through next year, if not for the next 100 years. Our enhanced HVAC system, enhanced cleaning, hand washing, and staying home if you're sick and isolating if you're COVID-positive. This year, we released several mitigation strategies, excuse me, including cohorting at recess, restricting cafeteria usage, restricting school visitors, restricting field trips, six-foot social distancing, use of desk shields. At various points in the year, these were all implemented. There was some give and take with them, but at the point we're at now, they were released. And the administrative team anticipates releasing, health and safety permitting, these last strategies with the new school year. The remaining restrictions on cafeteria usage, meaning that we ended with about 50% capacity. And assuming that statistics stay in the right direction, that would be at a full implementation for the fall. Any remaining social distancing in classrooms, any remaining use of desk shields, and cohorting dismissal. These would be anticipated to end, but obviously, we will be watching all of these things over the next several weeks. So that was the best way I felt I could give you an overview of the Safe Return. And I was asked by some to consider or to prepare a motion that you could consider if you wished at this point in the Safe Return Plan to end the monthly reports on this at your board meetings. You might remember that on September 20, 2021, you voted to have this as a standing item. And I have drafted a motion that you see there on the cover sheet, if you wish to remove this item as a standing item moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Budd. I'm going to make that motion and we'll see where we go with that and open it for discussion. I'll move that we remove a COVID-19 update as an agenda item on the monthly regular meetings of the Woodbridge Board of Education. Do I have a second? Sarah Beth? Okay. Now we're going to, open for discussion. So Maria, do you have any comments to make?
I do. I would just hope that with this, if there are any changes, like we do still have some mitigation strategies to sunset that those updates, giving to the community so that they know when all of the mitigation strategies have updated. And then of course, if there's any, we hope it will never happen again, but if there's an assurance of it at all. Could need to mention that and discuss what the best process would be going forward. But certainly if it gets to a point where we're saying there's no updates, there's no updates, probably.
Right. And I think, just to clarify in making the motion, my intention is that if the superintendent feels in their regular monthly update that there's something that needs to be brought to the board, that that would happen. But that is a separate agenda item. It wouldn't exist unless there was a need to reinstate it, which could be done with another vote of the board. That was my intention. So thank you for those comments. Anything else? Maria? Sarah Beth, any? Nope. Jay?
Thanks for the clarification. And that did help.
Okay. Anything else? No. Okay, so if people in virtual land didn't hear, Jay just said thank you for the clarification. Brooke?
No questions.
Erin?
I had a question about two things I didn't see on that list, Jonathan. Can you hear me?
Can you restart?
I just have a question about two things I didn't see on that list. One is swimming. I know swimming stopped due to COVID and I was wondering if we could get an update on swimming. And the other one was extended day and the cohorting that's happening in extended day.
So my thought on the second, my thought on the second is that cohorting at extended day to a large degree mirrors the cohorting within the building. And I would assume that that should also be able to stop when September occurs. With the swimming, I think that that's a conversation that also involves the use of the pool. And as some might be aware, the pool is actually being closed for a period of time in August for some facilities repairs. But my sense is that when the facility real, there's no reason why the physical education program couldn't continue with swimming.
So then with that, Lynn, I would just say, I do think it might be helpful if in September, we just have an update as to where current things stand as we go into the new school year. So I'm fine for it not to be a standing item, but I do think it would be helpful for, as we start the new school year, to know what is happening with all of these various things. Because there are some things where we're hopeful, but we're not sure. Just so all the parents are on the same page as to what to expect in the coming year as they begin that school year.
So would it be acceptable if I requested that the superintendent included that in the regular superintendent report? Is that good for you, Erin?
Yeah, totally.
I'll make a note of that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mike?
My questions got answered.
Thank you, Mike. Stephen?
No additional questions.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to call the roll to take this vote. Maria?
Yes.
Sarah Beth? Jay?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Stephen? Mike?
Yes.
Erin? Yes. And I vote yes, so that's unanimous, Marcia. Thank you, board. And I'll be sure to put on my list of to-dos to talk to the superintendent about including an update for the community in the September, or maybe even the late August report, if they have some idea about what the protocols will, if there will be any, will be. So you can expect that either in August or So you can expect that either in August or September, whatever would be appropriate. Great, thank you. Moving on to celebration of Beecher Road School and the rest of your report, Dr. Bud.
Erin, can you hear me? You're our test person out there. Okay. Ms. Sherman and I are sharing this report. Let me bring it up first. We have really three different lenses to which, through which to celebrate Beecher this year. I will begin, but Lisa will come in in just a second, by updating the board on the progress toward first the district and then the school goals. You will remember first, we spoke about engaging in a strategic planning process. And as you certainly will remember, because this was just discussed at the May meeting, the Strategic Planning Core Team did work in late April and early May to develop three goals and goal areas presented to the board in May. And the successive slides, and I should point out, if you're remote, this is on Board Book as well, capture the statements that go along with each of those three focus areas. And these are exactly the same slides that were shown in May. But I think in grounding work going forward and dignifying the work of the core team, it is worth my reading, these three. Building diverse alliances, building healthy alliances, that the district will create and support an inclusive environment that embraces awareness of and deepens appreciation of diversity and individuality while promoting the social-emotional wellness of all students. And I think speaking for the team, we might say that the reason this is first is it's foundational for really the success of anything else to happen. Second, academic framework, that the district will develop and support a coherent research-based curriculum that fosters students' inquiry skills and builds students' intellectual confidence. And finally, in contemporary learners, that the district will develop and integrate project-based learning opportunities into the curriculum to promote student choice and critical thinking as we prepare our students for future learning and responsible global citizenship. The goals, as we discussed, are lofty, they're ambitious, they're multi-year goals, they're not going to happen by September, they're not going to happen by next June, but they're the next five years of real good work for the district. And as relates to this district goal, it was important that we embraced that process this year. Second district goal this year, related to assessment of climate around diversity, equity, and inclusion, relates very well to the strategic plan goal one we just talked about. And at this point, I'm going to pause and turn this over to Lisa, who's going to pick up on this goal.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks so much for allowing me to be here and celebrate some of the wonderful things that have been going on at Beecher this year, despite another challenging year in education. So this goal is really around our work around DEI. It ties really nicely into a school goal that you're going to hear about very, very soon. But as you may remember, there was a DEI survey that was administered to students in grade five and six and staff members, and that was then shared with the Board of Education back in February. The town ad hoc, hopefully you've seen the signs around town and you've gotten the message from Dr. Bud, but the town ad hoc committee is also just completing their own DEI survey, and we're excited to hear about some of those results. And we're very fortunate because one of our Community Diversity Committee members is actually a town liaison. She serves on both committees, so it's really helpful to have that connection with the town committee. And then, as it says at the bottom there, we are going to refer to the prior slide, but also there will be some more information on this forthcoming in the school goal slide. So in the future, some of the work that we want to do, this is, DEI is definitely an area that we know as a school and as a district, that is ongoing work for all of us as educators, as professionals, as people. So one of the things that we have been talking about is our attendance and reviewing our attendance statistics. We did focus more on that this year, but spending some time next year, looking very closely at our attendance statistics and how it might break down along different disaggregated lines and also around our special education students to see how they're doing with their attendance. We started this year some special activities around Black History Month and Women's History Month, and we would like to continue that work and expand it a little bit, so that's something that we're going to continue doing. And really, that was for the whole entire school. Teachers still continue to incorporate lessons and activities all year long that are, you know, really culturally responsive and including diverse characters in their read-alouds and in their texts, and having those deep conversations in book clubs and in social studies classes. But we were really trying to engage the entire school in some shared experiences, so that was sort of one of the goals of those school-wide lessons. We are continuing our curriculum work. It was a little challenging this year, again, because of our shortages and because of the unusual year, but it is ongoing. It is work that we are continuing to do as we look closely at both social studies and literacy and the intersection of those two. We had a very lovely professional development in March with some outside presenters. I'll talk more about that in a minute. And we got some great feedback from the staff around that, and we're light, we're looking forward to using that as a springboard for next year's professional development. And as I mentioned, one of our Community Diversity Committee members is a member of the town DEI committee, so we're really happy to have that connection and being able to support the work of the town. This year, for example, at the very beginning of the year, there was that Woodbridge Like Me event, and our Community Diversity Committee pulled together a really lovely area as well, where we had members of the Community Diversity Committee from the Beecher community at that event, sort of representing our group and providing activities and books and a fun craft for the students to engage in. And it was a really nice collaboration with the town that we're looking forward to continuing. And then, as always, there, I know that there's work around policy and our website around DEI work, and then, as always, this third-to-last bullet is, you know, really the most important thing, which is just making sure that all of our students, every single one of them, feel safe, feels that they belong, feels that they are represented, and feels like they are a part of our family and that we are taking care of them. So that, to me, is the ultimate goal and the work that we are doing ourselves to make ourselves better and stronger and more educated, and we're really, we're doing it for the kids. So that, to me, is the ultimate end goal here.
Thank you, Lisa. We talked about this goal substantially in January at the mid-year point, but certain organizational changes were made to human resources processing. It's been figured here. It was so good that I was I'll try to say that again, that we spoke mid-year about how we had improved human resources processing, and the second bullet is probably the most important, more important here, that by implementing frontline software, we were able to eliminate paper leave request forms, which has made the districts much more efficient and also more timely in terms of processing of teacher and staff leave requests. We will speak in a few minutes about the capital projects for the district, but I point out that the reason that they're even on the agenda in such a positive way and supported by the town's capital budget is based on the outstanding work of the board and also other members of the ad hoc capital plan committee of the board. We'll talk about some groups of projects in a few moments, but I would say that the capital budget and additional funding sources will significantly advance the board's needs because while there's all sorts of things that are foundational, if we don't have buildings and grounds that are cutting edge, it's difficult to accomplish many other things. For an update on district goal number five, I'd also like to turn this to Lisa, who has some specific information to share from Cheryl Easell, our Director of Special Services also.
Yeah, so Cheryl actually worked really, really hard this year with her department in implementing some new assessments, and not only the implementation of the assessments, but more importantly, switching to an online platform that the staff can use to help with the scoring. And then the, the staff, again, this year began phasing in these multidisciplinary reports. So they were opportunities for the families to engage in the information in different ways and formats, and that was something that was phased in gradually this year.
Thank you, Lisa. And finally, for a district goal, the Board of Education has engaged in significant professional development. Many members of the board were new this past year, and the continued professional development is the final bullet, mostly links to teacher negotiations as occurring this summer. Very exciting here is that the district and the school really are one. And because of that, the goals of the school significantly advanced the work of the district. And Ms. Sherman and her team done outstanding work in this regard, and I'm going to turn it over to her for the school goals, starting with the first.
Thank you. So again, it's, you know, the best part about, one of the best parts, there's a lot of best parts, but one of the best parts about being a principal is that I really get to highlight the work that the staff, the teachers, the TAs, the custodial crew, you know, the nursing department, the secretarial staff, really the entire school community. And it's just such an honor that I get to be the one to stand up here and tell you all the amazing work they did despite a very challenging year and despite the staff shortages and despite education that kept pivoting and a pandemic that just doesn't seem to end. So I have to tell you that as wonderful as it is for me to be here tonight, sharing all of this with you, it really is the work of all the people in the building that made so much of this happen and that will continue to drive this work forward. So again, this, we started the year really knowing that we needed to focus on social-emotional learning of all of our kiddos, and, and we knew that we were having kids return from remote learning. They had not been in our building since the previous March. They had learned virtually the entire year. We also knew that last year, all of our students were impacted who were in person as well because they were in person or they were remote, and there was a lot of changes going on. We also utilized all of our intervention teachers last year as classroom teachers. So we just knew that starting this year was going to be a tremendous challenge for all of our students. So we really focused for all of our staff and all of our students on the social-emotional learning piece of our kids and made sure that that was something that we focused on and emphasized at the start of the year, but also throughout the year. A few ways that we did that is listed on the screen. The one that I really want to highlight is that this year, with the support of the Board of Education, teachers were permitted to choose social-emotional learning as a goal for the year. And a lot of the staff members did this. I know I can speak with Mr. Sapien when I tell you that many staff members valued and recognized the need for this, and they chose this as their teaching goal, and it really allowed for a lot of collaboration. There was a lot of collaboration with members of our wellness team, implementing specific lessons and specific read-alouds around feelings and emotions, really talking through a lot of problems and really spending a lot of time building and strengthening that classroom community. So I really want to just highlight that, that as part of the teacher evaluation program, you know, with really the support of the Board of Education and the superintendent, we were able to continually focus on social-emotional learning all year long. Our second goal was really around learning literacy. As we know, that's really important, of course, and is something that Beecher really cherishes and loves. We are a school that is a workshop school. We focus heavily on reading and writing workshop. Teachers could choose social-emotional learning as their goal. Many did. Some did continue to focus on literacy or mathematics, so that was an option. I will say that the, this area, one of the things that I really would love to highlight is many of our staffing shortages, we ended up using a lot of our literacy and math folks to substitute a lot. But despite that, the literacy team had a cross-disciplinary team happening. It was our literacy team, it was our multilingual learner teacher, and it was members of our special education department, some special education teachers and speech pathologists. And they engaged in some ongoing professional learning around dyslexia and around the science of reading, which if you, if you know anything about education right now, it is a hot button topic, and it is something that is coming more and more into focus this year and moving into next year as we sort of enter into the next two years. So they spent a lot of time this year working together. There was a lot of conversations around instructional practices. They attended webinars, they read articles, they really aligned their teaching. So it was really, really an example of just the powerful work that the staff can do. And, you know, when they are able and when they have the time and the opportunity, they did some really powerful work. And a lot of that translated into our primary teachers because they then took what they learned and what they were doing with their intervention groups or with their small groups of students identified with special education needs. And they took that and brought that to the general education teachers and said, this is what we're doing, this is what we learned, let's try implementing this in our classroom. So it was really, really powerful work that happened that then transferred over into the classroom. So that's that second bullet that I really want to emphasize. And I also can't not talk about literacy without talking about our multilingual learner teacher, Ms. Ton Huntington. She is a new addition to the Beecher community and a powerful one. She did some really tremendous professional development for our staff. I think at the end of it, the teachers were excited and really, really enriched by the, by the learning that they had with her and eager for more. So we're looking forward to tapping her more for some more professional development. And she did a really, really great job all year long of sharing resources and sharing learning opportunities with the staff, just via email. She would send out quick emails and say, here are some resources for, you know, Duale, or here's something that I want you to know about my new coming students who are here. So she was really a wonderful addition to the Beecher community. So this is, as I mentioned earlier, it tied in beautifully to the district-wide goal around DEI. And we did have some professional learning for our staff. We had professional learning in August, November, and March. The March professional development, we had some outside presenters from CEA come in, and they really led the whole entire staff around an implicit bias workshop. And we also did a lot of, we did some faculty meeting work around DEI, around, again, having some of our own conversations and having some discussions around case studies. And this is an area that we are going to continue to focus on and continue to move forward because we, like I said earlier, we all know that as much work as we have done, we know that there is even more work to be done to continue to grow so that we, you know, really just support all of our students and continue to just be the best educators that we can be. So this is something that we will, you will see again in future meetings. Technology is ever, ever-changing and ever-growing here at Beecher. We're so lucky because we have such a strong tech, technology team, and our technology team worked very closely throughout the entire year to support teachers. There was, again, some formal professional learning in August and November. That's the more formal professional learning that happened, but honestly, our technology teachers are, you know, in boots-on-the-ground, like helping teachers all the time. They are constantly meeting with PLCs, constantly conferring individually with teachers, constantly supporting students, in addition to, of course, their technology teaching. There is, as Joy was mentioning, there is the beginning blossoming of a makerspace in the Library Technology Center. It is a beautiful collaboration between the library space and the technology space. And with the support of the PTO and the amazing funds that they are gifting us, it is going to become even bigger and better. It's been a source, if you've been in the school at all the last couple of months and you wandered into the library, you, you will see it with your own eyes, and we're looking forward to having more people see it next year because it is a beautiful, creative, welcoming space, and it is constantly filled with students who are engaging in all sorts of different tasks, and you never know what you're going to get when you walk in. You know, there really was a fort in the middle of the library at one point, and I walked in and I was like, what's happening? Where did this come from? But it was so exciting because the kids really were doing exactly what the librarians described, which they were talking about how to build it and, you know, where to angle the roof, and it was just, it was steam and action. It was amazing. So that is really, really exciting, and we're excited to keep building on that and continuing to work on that. And the technology specialist teachers have a really strong foundation to continue their work supporting teachers next year and, you know, in, in the future with a lot of integrated technology experiences for the classroom. And school goal five is, so this is one that I will tell you is, was challenging. And school goal five is, um, so this is one that I will tell you is, um, was challenging. Um, it was challenging for us because again, our literacy and our math folks who really are the people that, um, make up a lot of our schoolwide data team, they were polled so often, um, and used so much that we did not have schoolwide data team meetings as frequently, um, as we should have. So that is something that we are going to improve on next year. Um, in previous years, uh, pre-COVID, we were able to meet more regularly and we were meeting as PLC teams too, more regularly to look closely at data. The PLC work happened this year more than the schoolwide data teamwork. So we're really excited to get back into that next year. Um, and the curriculum leaders and the literacy and the math, they are, you know, instrumental in doing some of this database decision making at the schoolwide level. At the PLC level, I will tell you that the team leaders do a really great job of leading the PLCs in looking at student data throughout the year and making some instructional decisions based on that. So, um, kudos to our team leaders because they, they kept that ship running at the PLC level, um, and we're excited to get back into it at the schoolwide level. And the cross disciplinary team that I talked about earlier is mentioned here because they did spend a lot of time looking at as part of their conversations and as part of their learning, they were looking closely at our primary data, um, when they were able to meet. They would, they would look at our primary data and they would look more specifically at the students that they were working with and the growth that they were making. Um, so when they were able to meet, they did do some of that work as well. And our, I think this is our final goal. Pretty sure we had six. So our final goal was around communication with families. Um, this was actually again, coming out of the pandemic, coming out of, um, students joining us virtually, um, and also coming out of the panorama surveys that we do where, you know, some of the feedback we hear from parents is that they are looking for more communication and they're looking for not only, um, um, whole class or whole school communication, but also some individualized communication. So we spent some time this year really having conversations around that. And, you know, one of the things that we did that was actually really helpful, um, and more surprising than I anticipated actually was really teachers just talking about, here's what I do. And, and we started that initially at the team leader level, um, where we sort of as a team leader started sharing out some of the different communication methods, different teachers use. And that sort of translated into a faculty meeting where we got to sit down and just say, hey, this is what I do and this is the tool that I use and this is how often I do it and this is what, how I manage it. And it was actually really helpful for us. You know, we, we forget sometimes that we're a very large staff, um, and we have teachers that are new to Beecher that came from other districts. So they had some things that we had not heard of at Beecher or some strategies for ways that they manage it. We have some teachers that are really committed to, you know, every week they pick, you know, five students and they make sure that they identify those five students and they reach out to those families. So it was really wonderful as a way for all of us to sort of lean on one another and learn from one another. We also, um, checked in on this throughout the year. You know, this was one of those goals that we said throughout the year, we don't want it to be talked about in, you know, August, September, and then forgotten about. So this was one of those ongoing topic of conversations at team leader meetings where we would check in on it every now and again. Um, probably it fizzled out in the spring, I'll say, because things got a little hectic by then, but definitely fall and winter, we were checking in on, um, communication and how was it going and what did we need to do. Another, um, thing that was implemented this year across many grade levels, I know third grade for sure, and some others, um, as well. They actually did a Google survey right before conferences, um, right before fall and, um, spring conferences. And they were very kind and shared that out with the entire faculty. And that was a way to invite that two-way communication. So they really asked the parents, like, tell me what you would like to talk about. Tell me what interests your child has or any concerns that you have. And that sort of helped guide some of the conferences, um, as, as the teachers were about to have them. So the third grade team, again, like this is why it's so great being a principal, right? Because I get to brag about my teachers. They were so sweet and they shared that out with the entire staff and many other staff members, um, took advantage of that and, and modified it to fit their own needs and then turned it around and shared it with their parents, you know, just trying to target that communication a little bit more specifically. Um, so kudos to the third grade team.
Now, there's a way in which that could have been boring, but I know that you found Lisa's presentation of it very energetic. And the thing is, we are moving this presentation toward photographs, if you're looking ahead. And, uh, that's because the most fun thing is how students and staff are like actualizing these things. But first, just a nod to additional elements of professional learning and evaluation. There's a statutory obligation that every year the superintendent reports on professional learning and evaluation. So this slide really benchmarks that. And I will speak to a couple of bullets and Lisa will speak to some others. But I'm going to just highlight the first bullet, which is all these great things that were achieved by the staff led by the administration were accomplished at a time that all those mitigation strategies were going back and forth. And we were also helping students make wise choices about masking or moving to the cafeteria, moving back, et cetera. So although I think that the work is quite laudable, even in a normal year, it was happening when the circumstances of education were different, uh, sometimes on a weekly or daily basis. So that deserves to be mentioned in a really significant way. But in addition to some really outstanding professional learning that Lisa has covered on some prior slides, uh, there are some additional, uh, moments of professional learning that also occurred. And for that, she's going to speak to the next few bullets on this slide.
Thanks. Yeah. Jonathan is right. It's funny because, um, Jimmy Sapi and I were talking recently about how we were like, do you remember when we were contact tracing and like spending hours and hours on that? And do you remember like, how did we do that? You know? So it's, it's funny how it was, it was a year where we were, there was mitigation strategies changing and guidelines changing. And yeah, so it's good. Thank you for mentioning that, Dr. Bud. Um, yeah. So some of the other professional development that I did not mention in previous slides, um, and I'm sorry I'm talking so much. It is, it is a lot to share, I know. So a lot to take in. So, um, but some of the other professional development was as always, we, I shouldn't say as always, but we often do a, um, a presentation and, um, Jimmy and Cheryl did it this year around section 504 and special education, sort of the, um, interconnectivity of those two, the, um, importance of the laws and the regulations. Um, that happened earlier in the year. We did have an outside consultant come in and do a professional development around assistive technology. We were very grateful for that. It's always good to hear from outside people and, you know, have a different voice, sharing information. Um, we had a conversation that I actually led with the support of Jimmy and Cheryl around the Connecticut Code of Professional Responsibility for Teachers. Um, and that really came out of a lot of what was going on within our community and in a way that we sort of needed to talk together about, um, our own, our own ethics, our own professional, our own professionalism and, you know, sort of working together as a community. And then, um, of course, the, um, as I mentioned, uh, all of our teachers were evaluated, all of our staff were evaluated using their regular teacher evaluation, um, system, which consists of, um, three meetings scheduled throughout the year, beginning goal setting, mid-year check-in and end of year reflection, as well as a variety of formal and informal observations and a review of practice for some staff as well. So throughout the year, all of the teachers did engage in that process as well. And again, thanks to the Board of Education and Dr. Bud for allowing many of the teachers to choose those social emotional goals because it was very helpful for our students and our learning community.
Perhaps the last thing to say about that final part is if you feel that, uh, some great things were mentioned by Lisa on the prior slides and you mentioned, you remember what she said about these are tied to, uh, teacher evaluation goals. I would just point out that back in April, uh, you endorsed supporting those flexibilities into the next school year as well. So all the teaching staff could continue with those same important goals, social, emotional integration of technology, et cetera. But now we get to the most interesting part. And, uh, boy, this, this slide, we just give some great visual examples of everything great at Beecher. Lisa, take it away. Super readers, arts night and field day on one slide.
Yeah, there's a lot going on here. That's really, really amazing. So, um, one, one picture you'll see is our youngest learners. They celebrate, um, their super reading. They have a unit in reading workshop where they learn about different strategies for tackling, um, reading. And then they end up putting on a super power parade, super reading power parade. And, um, the entire community comes out and claps for them and, and celebrates their reading and the work that they have made as kindergartners. This happens every spring. Um, it's, it's beautiful. It's literally the cutest thing in the entire world and it's incredibly beautiful to see because these little kindergartners are so proud of themselves in their capes and carrying their signs, announcing all of the ways that they are readers. Um, so it's really, really beautiful. And the entire school community cheers and claps for them. In the middle there is Joy mentioned, the Arts Week. Um, Arts Week came back happily. It came back slightly modified, but the theme this year was trees. Many thanks to the Arts Week Committee and the PTO for working together. We did have an arts night, which was really fun. We had some parent volunteers. Um, Lynn, Linda Atchison's art room was transformed into like a forest. There was trees and branches and limbs and lights and it was really amazing. So that was, we were so happy to have that back again. That is a longstanding Beecher tradition now and, and one that the entire community I know really, really loves. And then again, a kudos to my, we call them affectionately the A-Team because it's, um, Andrew, um, Lavaway, Ariane Buzzard and Anthony Taddy. They put together a really amazing field day for the students. Um, again, another one of those years where we were like, can we do it? Can we not do it? Can parents come? Can they not come? But we just went for it and they put together a really super fun field day. The best part about it was at the end of this amazing day where the entire community was just uplifted and we were all outside. There was music and games and it was just fun. At the end of it, they were already talking about how to make it even better for next year. Um, and it's just, you know, one of the many things that makes the Beecher teachers amazing because they did a wonderful thing and they already were like, let's make it better for next year. So, um, field day was a really fun day and we were excited to have that back again too, because that was another thing that went away with COVID. So we were so happy to have that back again.
And, uh, excitingly on the next page, uh, we can speak about instrumental music returning to Beecher. Uh, through some complicated reasons, including the COVID-19 pandemic, we had had a hiatus of instrumental music since the 2019, 20 school year. Now, at the risk of, uh, invoking issues related to fire code capacity or to what makes an event a super spreader, I can safely say now that I took this picture outside the entrance to the South Gym, uh, inside the building and you will see it is a fact, hundreds of really excited, well, what you see mostly here are family members, but in the middle are some outstandingly talented musicians butting in their talents in grades four, five and six. And we did two concerts, uh, on the same evening and we estimate about 800 individuals, uh, between the two concerts. And, uh, I'm not even saying anything yet about how excellent the quality of music was. That was also really amazing. But the fact of the students' commitment and re-engagement in instrumental music was just outstanding. And kudos to Mr. Caldwell, Ms. Zima, Ms. Limke for all they do for music here at Beecher and to expand the arts in all sorts of ways. That takes us, Ms. Sherman, too.
Our Dare graduation, another thing that came back and we were so happy it did. It was virtual. It was live streamed. So thanks to our technology department, but Officer Lynch works with our sixth graders all year long on the Dare program. And we were able to once again, hold our Dare graduation this year. Um, and that's Officer Lynch in his dress uniform there. And all the sixth graders are sitting there together, getting ready to, um, engage in that graduation.
And perhaps a little about sixth grade graduate, yeah.
I was just going to say, I can't believe I forgot. We also, and you know, it's so funny, um, Dr. Bud and I were talking and we were both so engaged in the sixth grade graduation that neither one of us got very great pictures of it, but we did have, um, our second sixth grade graduation at Beecher. Our first was last year, um, outside. I guess I should say returned because I know Ms. Piazek is about to tell me that a while ago it used to be at Beecher and then it was at the high school and we brought it back to Beecher last year and, um, we again had it this year. Uh, many thanks to our facilities department for helping. They were setting up chairs at 7:00 AM. The PTO came through at the 11th hour to help with decorations. Um, I honestly was ready to like just hug them and kiss them because they, they rescued us with some of those decorations. We were so grateful to them for that. Um, and also the office staff, they were the ones that helped with the program and the printing of the certificates. They made it all happen. So again, it was a team effort. It was a beautiful day. The weather was perfect. Um, we had a photographer who was there taking pictures of all of the graduates. We were so lucky because Dr. Bud spoke, um, Beth Heller spoke, Mary Wielander spoke, Lynn spoke. Um, we were able to, um, recognize our, um, teacher of the year. More on that in a minute. And it was just a really beautiful day celebrating our sixth graders and sending them off to the middle school next year. So it was, it was a really, really excellent day with a lot of help.
We should be honest, Lisa, why there's no slide on this. I mean, you skimmed around it a little bit, but you know, if you do the work well, sometimes the last slides of these presentations get done a little close to the meeting time. So we were late this afternoon doing this slide and Lisa and I both realized we did not have any picture of this year's event. I, oh, I said, we have some pictures from last year's event. We can probably incorporate them and nobody will know, but you know what the difference? Last year's event was socially distanced. So you see little groups of chairs. I said, that will not replicate really well, exactly what happened this year. So great feedback from the community members who were there. Many board members were there. Finally, we commemorate this school year and move to next school year by recognizing our Beecher Teacher of the Year, Ms. DePalma, our pre-K teacher since 2001. And I will read this because not everybody has access to see the slides. One of her evaluators, one of the special services directors over the years said this, Maria's strengths include her leadership in the department. This year as team leader, Maria took on the responsibility of ensuring that all documents are accurate and timely for the entire special services department. That's a lot of documents, as some of you know, hundreds of documents. Her efforts went above and beyond. And her nominator, who was a member of the general education staff here at Beecher, wrote this this year. Maria immediately puts nervous children and parents at ease with her calm and friendly demeanor. Beginning on the very first day of school, she takes our youngest students under her wing and nurtures them with compassion and care. She teaches them the building blocks of literacy and math as well as critical social skills to help set them on their way. At sixth grade graduation, we had stand up the five members of the sixth grade class who had been in Ms. DePalma's classes, three year olds back in 2013. And you take a look at any of those five students, they, that's the positive impact of a great pre-K teacher like Maria. So Maria will play an important role next year at Beecher as she has for 21 years already. And with that, it's a team effort. Uh, Ms. Piazek, Lisa and I are happy and proud to present to you this celebration of Beecher for the past school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bud, and thank you, Lisa. Um, I have, I have one comment to make. I love seeing the progress that we've made in our district goals, in our school goals and, and the work that's being done in professional development because that's what we're all about here at Beecher Road School. But the thing that warms the, my heart the most is the sharing of those celebratory things that make Beecher Beecher. And, um, this year did not disappoint me one bit, even though we had no photos of, uh, graduation, sixth grade graduation. I was there in person. I saw how glorious it was. I saw the smiling faces of the parents and the family members. I saw the, um, proud expressions of staff members and, um, our faculty. But most importantly, the joy on the face of the students was amazing. So, um, I thank you both for this, this report. Um, it's always one of the highlights of the year on the board because we're able to look back and reflect. And, um, so I thank you for, um, all of the work that the two of you have done along with the rest of the administrative team and, and the faculty and staff who have just been amazing this year. So thank you for that. Um, I'll ask for questions and comments. Maria?
None at this time. Thank you so much for sharing all these wonderful things for us.
Sarah Beth? Jay?
Thank you, Lisa Jonathan.
Brooke?
No, thank you again.
Erin?
Nothing. That was great. Thank you.
Yeah, we just all love it, right? You know? Uh, Mike?
Yeah, I agree. That's a great presentation. Thank you for that. Um, I do have one question. And that has to do with the, uh, the teacher evaluations. Um, so, uh, you mentioned that there's, um, an optional, uh, category that teachers that teachers are rated on that has to do with social emotional learning. Uh, we talked a little bit about that um, in one of the committee meetings. Um, you also mentioned um, cultural responsiveness. And so I, I was just curious about um, whether that is two categories or are those considered the same? Um, and how many optional categories are there for teachers to be rated on?
So there are five, right Lisa? Right, there are.
I was just gonna say, so teachers write a student learning objective goal and that was where they in the past have chosen an academic one. And this year they had that option of choosing an academic one or they could choose a social emotional learning one. Um, and then there is always a goal around parent peer feedback, which is communication really. It's, you know, communication with parents. Um, and then there was always um, sort of their own professional learning goal tied to the Connecticut um, teaching competencies where we sort of asked them to think about your own professional practice within the classroom. Um, and that one is measured more through observations than it is any other way. And then the final goal is a whole school indicator, which typically is just whatever the school district gets as our rating goes into the teacher evaluation rating. Uh, and that is the sort of the smallest percentage. Does that make sense?
Yes. So how many of those are, are optional or all of those mandatory that you just mentioned or are some of those optional?
Um, no, there are those, that, what I just described, those are all of the goals that teachers have to set. Where they have some um, options are, for this year at least, was in the first one I mentioned. This um, student learning objectives and that's where they could choose that social emotional piece or an academic piece.
I see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll just say so impressive and really exciting. It's, you know, what's made our experience here so special as a family. So really excited about the work, also about the goals for both the district and the school. I think it's a, it's a very comprehensive list and yes, it's, it's gonna be five years. But um, there's so much being done and so much to be done that I think is gonna strengthen our community. So thank you.
Uh, Lisa and Jonathan, thank you again. Appreciate your hard work. Lisa, next on the agenda is the Beecher Road School update, but I think you pretty much covered that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, I was just gonna say so much of it was really included in, in what we just discussed. I, I don't really have much additional to add other than to say, um, you know, thank you. I just wanna sort of publicly thank the, the Beecher Road School staff. Um, everybody, all of us as a community, we really came together this year and worked really, really hard in an ever-changing school environment. And I'm just really grateful to be here at Beecher and to have the support of the Board of Education is amazing. Um, so I, you know, just sort of publicly wanna thank everybody that I am really honored to work with this year. But really no new updates beyond that. And Joy, we're gonna miss you if you're still on.
Thanks, Lisa, and we appreciate you as well. Uh, next on the agenda is the Facilities Committee Report. Um, Mr. Hughes, uh, the Chair of the Facilities Committee is not with us this evening. Um, I'll just uh, point out to the board and to the public that in Board Book you will find the minutes from the uh, June seventh, twenty twenty-two Facilities Committee meeting that took place at that meeting. Uh, Vito Asparro um, gave the Facilities Department Monthly Report. And there was a discussion of the solar initiative, which we will be discussing later on in this agenda. So thanks to Jeff for chairing that committee this past year. Moving on to Finance Committee, Dr. Daye.
Okay, we had a very busy month. We had two meetings. So I'll quickly go through the first meeting. The first meeting was held on Wednesday, June the eighth from seven oh one to eight seventeen PM. Um, this meeting covered three primary items. We looked at the fiscal year twenty twenty-three capital budget as approved. We looked at revenue to the district and we were, we also examined the twenty twenty-three operating budget as approved. Uh, to just sum up very quickly what that meeting was about, we talked a little about the roof replacement. Uh, the roof replacement comes in at three hundred and fifty-one thousand in the first year, twenty twenty-three. And another three fifty thousand in the following years, so around seven hundred thousand dollars. Just remember that as we go forward, because I'm gonna try and explain how we're gonna recover that back. Uh, there's significant state support in this. I believe Richard can confirm. Was it thirty-four percent was it? From the roof, twenty-eight percent. So we get twenty-eight cents in the dollar back. I did try to get thirty-four. Uh, Richard was convincing me otherwise. So I, we get twenty-eight cents back on the dollar for that. So that's a rebate back to us from the state. Uh, this flooring remediation for a hundred and twenty thou- twenty-five thousand. That'll begin hopefully next, this month going through. So we'll get some bids out. But that's all subject to sampling and inspection. Uh, the town thankfully will cover the oil tank remediation. Thank you Beth and Tony and the team for taking care of that. However, we'll take care of the sidewalk. And again, this is gonna get included into this year's budget. So that's a great item to bring in this year. Uh, retro commissioning is complete and everything's been covered in the budget this year. Uh, network wiring, that will occur in July and August with an installation date September, October. And this is really for security and network improvements that are needed here. Uh, there were some questions on the special excess grant that's remitted to the town, not the school, and how these funds might be best re-appropriated to the school. Uh, there was discussion on a seventh section in kindergarten. Ms. Sherman mentioned that intake was uncertain until the last minute. And the committee was provided with three options. I believe Jonathan's gonna talk about those options later to uh, at the meeting today. Um, there was a substitute of fifty thousand from interns to substitutes. Um, so there was a budget transfer. It's just a dearth of interns at the moment resulting uh, in that change and we have some uh, very strong substitutes who can help in the classroom. Now, one part, um, we noticed was there was an overall reduction of one point seven percent in supplies and furniture. And here I've sort of got a suggestion. Inflation's running at around ten percent in general at the moment. And I think we really need to keep a close eye on this item with the town. Given that, you know, if we're taking it down one point seven percent, next year we could be back up ten percent on the original. So we really wanna keep an eye on that. Last but not least, we talked about revenues that Beecher Road School generated. Many people don't know that the school does generate revenues. So it generated four hundred and thirteen thousand in IDA grants that support special education and preschool programs. Eighty-seven thousand in Title One to Four Grants uh, for educational achievement gaps and ELL students. About fifty-two thousand in special pandemic grants that support COVID nineteen recovery. And two general election, education pandemic grants. S R two, that was for the two hundred and five thousand in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-three to support COVID supplies, summer learning academy and special education salaries to support additional students and purchase services. That's leaving a balance of about thirty-four and a half thousand that could be applied to network wiring and security upgrades. And then there was an ARPESR that was received in twenty-two to twenty-four, four hundred and sixty, almost four hundred and sixty-two thousand. There's about a hundred and seventy-four thousand um, encumbrance for that for social worker and special education salaries and the learning academy. That leaves a balance of about two hundred and eighty, eighty-eight thousand, which has been proposed as sort of a down payment on the network and security enhancements. And again, I've got another suggestion here. Um, I would suggest, you know, the funds come uh, for these upgrades for network and security come partially from ARPESR. And a request to the town from the excess cost grant estimated for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And again, I'm gonna go back to Richard to confirm this. I believe it's in the region of about three hundred and twenty-five thousand, is it? Or two hundred? Next year's excess cost.
It's uh, this year.
The estimate. This year's was three hundred and twenty-six thousand. So I suggested that we ask for a portion of that to go towards the network and the security enhancements. Now, we're gonna talk about the solar project. Richard's gonna talk about that. But I just wanna drop a little note here that I'm gonna suggest that the town gets sort of reimbursed for these network upgrades and the security enhancements through the solar initiative. So I've just done a little basic math with Rich- Richard's help. And I would say that we encumber a hundred and sixty-seven thousand to cover salaries for special education teacher, social worker and summer learning academy for twenty-three, twenty-four. And use the funds from the excess cost grant to support the network and security upgrades. Now, in my next item, I'm gonna quickly mention that with the solar initiative, it could save us about nine hundred and thirty thousand and I'll explain how I got that number. Now, last but not least, I wanted to mention something quickly. A budget is a forecast of costs that we expect to incur in a given year. Nothing is certain as we know and we, we all have had to deal with uncertainty and costs. Think a year back, did you ever think you were gonna pay five dollars for a gallon of gas? And so now multiply that one expense that we've all had to incur by about a thousand for a school budget. So you sort of know what Richard and Jonathan have had to go through this year to try and get the budget back on track. So that was the first report. Sorry, guys. Today's a busy day. Let me move on to the second meeting. We had a second meeting six days later. That was this one. So we met on Tuesday, fourteenth June from four thirty-one to five thirty-four PM. And in that meeting, the items presented was the budget narrative for the current year, twenty-one, twenty-two, and the operating budget that we just discussed and the update on the solar initiative. And I know Richard and Jonathan are gonna talk about that, but I'm just gonna drop in what I think the savings are gonna be. Now, I've, I've gotta give a big yay to Jonathan and Richard. Uh, the expected budget balances of ninth of June, twenty twenty-two was a positive three thousand six hundred and twenty-two. Now, for some of you in the room, you remember last November where we were, we were in a negative of a hundred and seventy-one thousand plus. So on top of that, what I'm gonna tell you is this past year saw lots of unexpected costs. Additional class sections, recruiting a required nurse, increased medical insurance costs, higher fuel and electricity costs, higher liability insurance and workers' comp, unanticipated retirement payments, urgent capital expenses drawn from the operating budget to fix the micro turbine and the Jace that Jonathan just mentioned earlier as key big increase items. And we were able to include those in the budget alongside ending the year hopefully in a slight surplus. Now, some of the items I just mentioned amount to a few hundred thousand dollars. So I think we've done an amazing job this year in getting that budget back into line. And again, thank you to Richard and Jonathan for working on that for us. Now, I mentioned the current budget absorbs um, um, retirement expenses. This year, I believe there's been more than we'd anticipated. And so there was a fifty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five that we've already absorbed in the current budget. Sidewalk improvements have been included for nine thousand. Now, the only outstanding item is legal expenses. And Richard informed us that um, uh, what had been encumbered for that particular item would closely resemble the final outcome with a little change here or there. The committee was informed that the excess grant was expected to be around three hundred and twenty-six thousand, which is sent to the town. The town has kindly offered to return a hundred and sixty-seven and a half thousand back to the school. It was suggested by me that some formula be considered on this revenue that usually gets passed back to schools to allow the district to accommodate unanticipated special expenses that arise during the year. I think we should set up a committee to look at this and to examine how this might happen going forward. Um, another item, which is probably a little drag on us, is that we were informed that grants coming to districts like ours that are in Ohio Durg have been declining over time. So something that we have to keep on the horizon, at least going forward, is that these items, the IDAE grants that I talked to you about and the Title One to Four Grants, they're gonna be declining going forward. And so we really have to anticipate these changes and plan for them now rather than when those changes impact us. Last but not least, the solar proposal. I know Richard and Jonathan are gonna talk about this. But for me, this goes hand in hand with the roof replacement. As I mentioned to you, the roof replacement completion was expected in twenty twenty-three, uh, the summer of twenty twenty-three. And I believe the cost has been estimated to be around seven hundred thousand or thereabouts. Uh, so the solar proposal really augments this roof restoration and replacement. So if we think about this solar option, Richard has brought to the board an amazing proposal. And I know Jeff has also looked at this from the Facilities Committee and I get two thumbs up from him on this too. Uh, the bottom line is that the proposal that um, Richard and Jonathan have brought to us would lower our costs to four cents per kilowatt hour. We're currently paying twenty-three cents per kilowatt hour. Now, the, the savings, Richard has estimated to be around seventy-one and a half thousand a year. Now, the way I think about this is solar panels have about a twenty-year life. So I'm looking at about what, seven hundred, one point five million in sort of real dollar terms, but we don't think that way. I would discount that back and take the present value, what that is. Works out to about nine hundred and thirty thousand in today's money. So in a way, if we've got an eight hundred thousand project for the roof replacement and we're getting nine hundred and thirty thousand back on the solar initiative in today's money, then this is a no-brainer. We're up a hundred and thirty thousand. So this item and our refurbishment will go to vote and referendum. So if you're watching and listening, I'm petitioning to you now. Thumbs up, votes up, because this is worth a hundred and thirty thousand approximately to us in today's money. And so this really should be a no-brainer. Now, last but not least, um, with that solar initiative, we also get twenty-eight cents back from the state, as I mentioned earlier. So that sort of brings us back another two hundred thousand dollars. So this really is a great initiative. And this is why I would like to request that we go to the town for the network and the security enhancements to draw on this money that we're bringing into the town in today's money. Finally, I wanted to thank Richard and Jonathan for their excellent work in navigating me and taking all my questions late at night, most of the time. And the new board members. We were a new finance committee. Lynn was the person who helped us guide us along the way thankfully. And so I just wanted to say thank you to Jonathan and Richard for this and Lynn. That's all for me. If there's any questions.
Jay, thanks so much. I, I have to add thanks to um, Jonathan and Richard for their work. Hours and hours and hours, um, crunching numbers here. I'm still, I'm just rolling over in bed and they're here in the morning, um, late at night working with the finance committees. It's really been amazing. So um, Dick, thanks so much for, for being um, our rudder as we, as we move through this year. Appreciate it very much. I'll give you a round of applause. Uh, so anyone have any questions for, for Jay? It was a lot to swallow, a lot of information. Um, and, and it doesn't stop. We just start a new year um, in ten days. So uh, Jay will, will be uh, captain of the ship once again. And uh, we will continue forward on our path. We're moving on to the capital budget. Uh, Dr. Bud?
Yes, there's a, there's a document in Board Book. The only thing I would say, Lynn, that confused me a bit about Jay's report, he talked about questions late at night. I remember the question was early in the morning, but it depends, it depends what time y'all go to bed. The thing is, if, if you take a look at the document, I'm not gonna project it because it's in the packet you have board members. It says FY twenty-three Board that capital budget is approved and other capital needs. Uh, in essence, this has been discussed with the Facilities Committee and the Finance Committee. Uh, let me just, the page looks like this. That's what it looks like. And it's after the uh, solar uh, detail. After the Finance Committee report, exactly. So, uh, but I can gloss. After the finance committee report, exactly. So uh but I can gloss a couple of more things on here. So. Two major projects identified by the ad hoc capital plan committee are being funded uh through the approved capital budget. Uh, the first is the roof replacement. I'm not going to repeat everything Jay has said, but the point is. The three hundred fifty one thousand in the first year, including the architect design fees, architecture. Design fees are required by the state for reimbursement. Uh, we've sketched out here essentially the path. And by January twenty twenty three, uh, the board will have wanted to go to bid on this, and the state has several procedures in their timeline. To get you on phase. The January twenty three is necessary, we've learned, so that construction could begin in the summer of twenty twenty three. And obviously, there's a need for the uh summer construction to be phased and scheduled carefully because the building is used. Uh, by the summer for a variety of things, and this is not a district where you can just move these programs somewhere else easily. Uh, second, uh, there's a one hundred and twenty five thousand dollar flooring remediation replacement. That's been approved through the capital budget, again underscoring what Jay was saying. Uh, these projects would be submitted to bonding, which requires referendum in the next few months. Uh, the point is, uh, Mr. Esparo is working with Fuss and O'Neill to do some sampling. Uh, the board has heard before that the flooring remediation. The flooring replacement involves remediation of some hazardous materials in some parts of the facility, which is why these go together. And why there's sampling involved. And basically, the timeline for this for actual removal uh and replacement is probably looking like next summer. Uh, because once a crew comes in with all the materials to actually do the abatement, uh, this is not something that can just be done over a weekend. So thank you again to the town for the uh support through the capital budget and uh the bonding through referendum will be the next step. Now, uh, as Jay's mentioned, there's other capital needs, but we're happy to report that several of them are getting addressed. Uh. There is an oil tank in the north area of the building that has been abandoned that must be removed. Uh, but we have uh, uh, the town is paying for the removal through its contingency for the year that's about to end. And we are paying from the current operating budget, the year that's about to end, about fifteen and a half thousand dollars for sidewalk replacement. That sidewalks sidewalk that is near the oil tank that must be fixed up um. When the oil tank is removed. The retro commissioning has been paid for and also completed in the current budget. And then, as Jay mentioned, uh, there is the possibility. Of network wiring and infrastructure being paid for by the ARPESR grant, uh, which obviously involves. Uh, some work over the next few months, but there's two projects not on this uh. Sheet that I would call to the board's attention. Uh, one would be some capital needs related to security. And uh, the board would be discussing those in executive session. And then, second, as we were just discussing this, I believe it was at finance, although it could have been at facilities. There was some interest in uh the uh ARP monies that have been uh received by the town of Woodbridge as well. And there was the interesting idea that perhaps they could be used, among other things, uh, to pay for some improvements to the playgrounds. And also to the loop, since those are areas outside the school that are used by the public as well as our students. And uh, in initial conversations, the town has encouraged us to uh put forth a proposal. And it will consider that proposal along with proposals from other departments within the next months. So uh, this week we will be submitting that request to the town leadership so that they can uh be thinking about that. Certainly, it has our strong recommendation here. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for that, Jonathan. Any questions from the board? Okay, we'll move on to twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three operating budget reconciliation.
And this requires, not requires, but I have a presentation. Just a minute, please. The finance committee has thoughtfully discussed the uh operating budget. Proposed reconciliation at two meetings in June, and what you're seeing tonight uh reflects the comments that we've received at both those meetings. And so Richard and I and the administrative team put it forward to you uh as a a recommendation to approve this reconciliation. It not only it balances, but it meets the uh thoughts that you have had. Uh, first of all. The operating budget increase is five point five one percent for a sixteen million four hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred one dollar budget. Additionally, uh, the town has plans to give one hundred and sixty seven five uh of its revenue. From the special education excess cost grant applied against the tuition line. Now, thi- this is where board members, although I have this presentation up in your packet, you also have the line item after the slideshow. You will see on the top of page four of the line item budget. You will see a line about three down from the top of the page that says tuition, special education, location wide. And the note there from Richard indicates that that's where the revenue will be applied against. And that's toward the top of page four. So that's ledged in this particular way here. Uh, and as I said, Jay has said, everybody has said, we've discussed this at the June finance meeting. So our job was to reconcile. The board had many good priorities. Uh, and not all of them could be funded in this particular reconciliation, but uh the board's work continues in future years. So it's good to have goals as well. Now, our principles has been to continue to maintain the excellence of the school. Within a time of escalating student needs, including as related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Now, someone said earlier, I forget if it's you, Lynn, or Rick, you said, oh, the pandemics come to an end. I liked you saying that. So then somebody might say, well, why are we still talking about? Well, the students have been affected by it and will be for some time anyway. Um, this reconciliation takes into account all known line item updates. Okay, so we've been precise, uh, whether that's transportation, cost, special education, et cetera. And in this slideshow, we're just going to present the major elements of the reconciliation because frankly. The great detail with every line item also happened in January when you approved a budget to go to the town. So what's changed since then? First of all, we talk about the certified section, the one hundred section. So this is budgeted based on actual known staff. So for example, if we've had a retirement. Uh, we've been able to already accommodate the savings from that retirement, and that's reflected in the actual lines here. The number of classroom teachers reflect forty three total sections. And we'll look at that in a minute, based on grade level. As was already mentioned, there are two positions that we have moved to ARPESR funding. The first is a special education teacher. This was actually already funded this year. We had a need in about mid September. Based on increasing special education needs uh to fund this. We funded it through grant this year, and it's being funded through ARPESR again next year. Because the needs of the students continue. And finally, uh, the board uh endorsed uh an additional social worker uh based on, in general, mental health needs of students. We have eight hundred and fifty students, and uh our current staffing of a point seven social worker was simply not adequate. That additional social worker will be funded by ARPESR as well. Uh, the board had hoped to add a second steam specialist position, but that has not been uh funded in this particular reconciliation. And in addition, you will see toward the bottom of page one of the line item budget. Uh, two lines up from the bottom of page one, you'll see a reduction. Of fourteen thousand dollars in the curriculum writing line. But that's been offset by over twenty thousand dollars that we've been able to fund in summer curriculum writing. From the budget year that's ending now. So we're very comfortable with that reduction. Now, the next slide shows you up to date B R S sectioning. And this is based on right today known numbers. And I will say that we've updated this chart the past few weeks for finance committee, and the kindergarten number does keep moving in the positive direction. The class size guidelines that the board has had for some time are listed at the bottom. And uh, as you know from this chart, the second column shows the currently enrolled number of students and in parentheses are the number of sections. Now, you will remember at one point, when we set the budget, we had talked about seven sections. That, of course, the thing about kindergarten is despite our best efforts, not everyone registers them prior to our budget reconciliation. So that gets to our question of, well, wait a minute, should we have a seventh kindergarten section? What's our risk tolerance there, especially in a tight budget? We've talked about this at some finance committee meetings, and Richard and I believe that we're representing the uh interests of the board. Uh, by the forty three classroom sections you see here. However, many board members pointed out, and I'm going to say it while we're on this slide. That not only is kindergarten on its way up, but uh several sections of grade two. And a couple of sections of grade one are actually over the guidelines as well. So we're not, you know, sitting in, you know, luxury at those levels. So based on feedback from finance committee, this particular reconciliation notes that. We although we anticipated one hundred twenty seven enrolled, as of today, we have one hundred and one. If we reach one fifteen, we start to exceed the guidelines per section. And um obviously, one fifteen is fourteen more than are enrolled now. So might we get fourteen more? It seems on the likely side to me, but as some board members have pointed out. Most class sizes in grade two and some in grade one are already exceeding guidelines. So. In the summer, the board may very well have to make a decision to add a seventh kindergarten. What if some more kids come into grade one and two? And the comments I think I fairly reflect from the board is the board does not want to be in a situation in July or August of having absolutely no wiggle room. So where is wiggle room? And we talked about a few scenarios with the fini- at the finance committee. And what we have done is the following based on that, and I'll read the last bullet. Based on the likely need for an additional K section or additional sectioning at another grade. Oh, you'll have to apologize if we're in the room in person. It gets dark every hour or so until somebody waves their hands. Okay, great. Based on that possibility. We have revised the line item budget. If you look toward the bottom of page one. Richard has added a line four up from the bottom. Teacher salaries other, which, if you will, is a placeholder. And it's a placeholder that the board and the administration can use in the summer. For adding a kindergarten section, adding a section at grade one and or two. Uh, or other needs that might equate to a teacher's salary. As a result of that, in order to achieve that placeholder, uh, we have reduced, based on finance committee discussion. The existing one point oh steam specialist position. So that line, which is just a couple higher than that, uh, reflects a zero in this reconciliation. Sure, you'll have questions or comments, but perhaps I can move to non-certified because everything moves, you know, connects together. The board had a very legitimate interest in an additional halftime custodian position. Our building has demands on it as it ages. That's been removed from this proposal, uh, not prudent at the moment. Um, our para educator lines reflect the current contract settlement with the C S E A that was achieved last month. And based on a priority of the board, ten additional para educators have been added. I'll show that in another slide, but. They're distributed between special education and general education. Um, finally, since we met at finance committee last week, we have also had to add a new line. This is on page two of the uh line item budget. And it's about fifteen lines down, six one nine hundred eleven oh four. Non-certified salary transportation. And you'll see it in there for fifteen thousand. It's coming off of a zero for fifteen thousand. Uh, the district was notified toward the end of last week of the retirement. Of the current transportation coordinator for Bethany, Woodbridge and Amity. And there will be a need to replace that uh position uh with somebody to do the work. And at the moment, in conversations with the Bethany and Amity districts, it would seem that fifteen thousand is a reasonable placeholder. Uh, the individual's retiring at the end of September, so there's a little bit of time. But to move forward, I I wouldn't be able to go into a ton of detail about that here, except to say. We want a placeholder here, so you're not caught up short in two weeks where to fund that. Uh, essentially, though, if anyone is listening and wonders what this person does. Is everything from helping to organize the routes to dealing with frontline complaints uh or concerns from families or bus drivers, right? This next slide shows you the administrative distribution of para educators. So this matches uh the ten additional paras. Uh, the ones that you see in the top are uh actually required now for the special education needs students who will be at Beecher next year. Uh, twenty four of them are uh Woodbridge residents, and so those twenty four are funded through the operating budget. As the footnote indicates, an additional four, one to one, are funded through open choice. Uh, then there are six special education, excuse me, resource. Para educators, and you know, in general, we've talked a lot about how in order to achieve the needs in special education. The district has had to pull from general education paras the past couple of years particularly. So your priority here has helped restore the next two lines. There would be in this scheme, one uh general education kindergarten para. And then one general education, non-kindergarten para at each other grade level. Uh, which, from the administration's point of view, is a much more healthy funding of the TAs who are needed to support student needs. And one point six in library media technology. So one thing that Richard has done. Is he has reflected very accurately in the F T E count for each line. How many people do each actual job. That's much appreciated. Uh, boy, we thought about adding some bullets to this slide, but there's nothing to say. The benefits section, which sometimes we've had whole meetings about, this this just reflects the actuals at this point and uh current insurance costs. Our next sections of the budget, they do reflect that professional development. Has been reduced. You would see that at the bottom of page two. However, I think this board has wisely said professional development is necessary. It's not superfluous. So we want to say, first of all, we've moved seven thousand professional development from the operating budget to ARPESR. And in addition, we've revised the Title Two Grant to put fifty two hundred more professional development there. You will see at the top of page three of the line item. An additional fifty thousand dollars in substitutes. That is an offset to the top of page four. At approximately fifty one thousand dollar reduction to interns. And that's a wash, and if you will, it's based on, we anticipate it's going to be easier to find building substitutes than interns. We're beating the bushes in both categories. We're actually doing very well in the building subline at the moment. So rather than the board having to be in a complicated transfer after the fact, it makes sense to actually fund the substitutes now. We have people who actually started in May and June in these jobs and want to continue. The other lines reflect actuals. And our last several sections, there is a total in the six hundred series of a one point seven reduction in supplies. But we've noted there, there's some part, there's some types of supplies that really can't reasonably be reduced. Our maintenance supplies to clean the building safely. Uh, digital subscriptions that are necessary for students to learn with things like uh learning A to Z. Uh, there's some required testing supplies. That's, for example, for our gifted program identification, but also for a special education testing. And there is an increase. In the last line of the six hundred series uh to security safety. And uh, we can speak more about that in executive session, but that does reflect uh what's required there. Based on some feedback from the finance committee, uh, we have left in a five thousand dollar placeholder for furniture. Now, if there were a seventh kindergarten section, there might well be a need to do, you know, kindergarten furniture. But on the other hand, if there weren't a seventh kindergarten section. But on the other hand, if there weren't a seventh kindergarten section, there might be more children in other grades who deserve fresh furniture to sit in. And I would say in general, long term, it's healthy to have some furniture money every year, like at our houses, so that we don't have to refurbish everything at once. There's a total six-point-one percent reduction in dues and fees. And there's a reduction, finally, in the Ezra Nurse account. That's the next, last line. That just matches the actuals. So the reason we've been somewhat detailed in presenting this even tonight is we want to be very transparent to you, but also the town. This matches what we told the town earlier would be reduced if we had reductions to the overall budget. And we think that we've responsibly done this and matched your thoughts. But this is your budget to take to the next level. So with that, I'll stop presenting. Certainly, we're happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Jonathan. And, and Dick again. Thank you for your work on this. It wasn't an easy task. Finance really had a lot of discussion about it. So we appreciate your efforts in making this all happen. So before I open for discussion, I'll make the motion, a move that we approve the fiscal year 2023 Woodbridge Board of Education Operating Budget Reconciliation as Presented. Do I have a second? Sarah Beth? And I'll open for discussion. Maria?
Thank you, Lynn. No questions if you want.
Sarah Beth?
So what happens if we have, like, it looks like some of those classes are still, but we're still going to have two extra needs, the classes? Then we have to go back and maybe that's for that extra access. Right? Okay. And my only other question was on the open choice, those four additional paraeducators. Those are because of, it's not funded through open choice?
Because of open choice?
Yes, and as I know you're aware, the district has ongoing conversations about another district meeting its legal needs. So it's because of students identified with special education needs or enrolled in project choice. And then the obligation is on the district in which they live.
Hello?
Dr. Bud, you're muted again.
Yeah, you're muted.
So I, I think you couldn't hear that. Could we? Perhaps just to summarize the question, I think the question was on, do you want to ask it again?
We heard the question. We just didn't hear your response.
Oh, okay. So the, the response was that those four paraeducators are necessary for the special education needs of some students who are enrolled through Project Open Choice. There's an obligation of the urban district to support the needs from that. And the board is aware of some ongoing conversations related to that topic.
Are those for new incoming students?
Not necessarily.
Jay?
Okay, Jonathan, I've got three quick questions. The first one was the transportation line. So how was that position currently funded? How is it currently funded?
My understanding is that it is currently paid for by the Amity District.
Okay, thank you, Amity.
It's fully funded through the Amity District, yes, currently.
Fifteen, or that's our share and then Amity pays fifteen?
So I understand, yes. This is fairly complicated and somewhat new information in the past couple of days. And my current understanding is that Amity fully funds this at a higher cost.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. I'd like to go to the next question quickly again. So I noticed there's the reduction of the existing STEAM specialists. Now, we just heard Joyce mention that we just invested fifty thousand in the STEAM. I hear Lisa tell me the school goal four was best practices using technology. Is this a wise move?
The administrative team discussed this a fair amount, including in relation to basically two other proposals. One other proposal would have been to shave off a teacher at another grade level, which seemed very unwise based on the class sizes. And the second option was really to reduce the number of general education paraeducators. And Lisa and her team concurred that that would have an even more deleterious effect and actually set back a key goal of the board. The thought is that while a STEAM specialist is absolutely helpful, that for a year it can be deferred, given some of the richness we have in technology specialists, library media, and general integration of STEAM across the curriculum. So while the administrative team wouldn't necessarily endorse this if the total amount were higher from the town, it seems like the best out of some poor actions.
I feel personally that this is going against everything that we're investing in. So we're investing all these funds. The PTO is supporting the investment with fifty thousand dollars. And, you know, I would like to think that the town would help with the situation to see if they could support the maintenance of the STEAM specialist in the classroom. And again, I would request that you speak to the Board of Finance and the town to see if that could be achieved. Again, drawing back to the excess cost grant, it's three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. We're only getting half of that back. And I think that could be put to good use. Thank you. Last point, very quickly. Sorry, Jonathan. So one item that did come up extensively was curriculum development. I think that came through the administration, that came through Erin Williamson. Brooke Hopkins also mentioned curriculum development. So where are we at that? Because I believe we were looking at putting in maybe a moderator, maybe a specialist in that particular position. Could you talk to that?
Sure. So the best place to look at this would be toward the bottom of page two. Curriculum writing as the next to la, excuse me, bottom of page one. Curriculum writing as, as the next to last line on that page is funded at twenty-two thousand. And in addition, there's a between twenty and twenty-five thousand that's been allocated from this year's budget that we're ending, which gives about forty-five to fifty thousand dollars. And I know Ms. Sherman had heard the interest of the board at the last Finance Committee meeting. And we'll be talking more about options moving forward.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you. That's my question.
Thanks, Jay. Brooke?
So, yes, I have a question. The open choice, did they decide when we will know what students come this year? I know we had asked in that meeting, do we have our date?
Yes, three of the four students have already been registered and enrolled.
So we're only waiting for one more?
Yes, yeah. So they're much earlier than normal.
Good. And then also the ARP, the SRR grant. So we have our social workers funded through that?
The one-point-oh new social workers is through that.
So only one?
One-point-oh social worker and one-point-oh specialist.
Okay. So when that goes away, we have to make sure we put that in our budget?
That would be true.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify for the board, the one-hundred-and-one number we're showing for kindergarten reflects all four open choice students.
Not a question, more just a statement. And I, I'm not sure if anyone from the town is here, but it just, my understanding is we are very tight in terms of our budget. And so if we find ourselves in a situation where we do need another paraeducator with a one-on-one support or any additional special education needs, those needs would be outside of what we currently have funded. There is zero wiggle room in this budget to get that need, which we are legally obligated to meet, met. And it would, really would require us going to the town for additional funding and support. And I just, I think it's really important that, that that's kind of widely understood within the town because those are a few of the things that are kind of outside the board's control. But to Brooke's point, we're already funding some really critical services through ARPESR that we're going to have to figure out how to get into our budget next year. And we're kind of already at that limit in terms of para-support. So I just, do you, I, I guess my question is, do you feel like, does the town really understand that that is where we are with our budget? That right now we're good, but, you know, we don't know what is going to potentially come up in terms of the kids and their needs in the upcoming year?
I couldn't say necessarily what somebody knows or doesn't know or understands, but I could say that Lynn and I met with representatives from the town about a week or so ago and stressed exactly the points you're making. And this is a key difference between us and some other districts nearby, that we budget based on known needs. So the twenty-four plus four one-to-one special education paraeducators, there, there are actually twenty-eight students on a list, right? Coming in September or returning in September. And we look at that regularly. And if somebody leaves, we would reduce it, but that hasn't been happening really recently. As opposed to some districts which build in a contingency, if you will, thinking we might get a few of these actual students. So if one, two, or three more actual students were to come in, I think that the town has heard from Lynn and me that the board would be thoughtful in asking for more support at that point.
And, and I'll just re, sorry, Jonathan. I'll just reiterate that we've talked about that for several months now since the budget process started in January. And, but our last meeting, I think there was a rich and robust discussion about it. Erin, anything else?
No, thank you.
No questions, just a comment. I also was concerned about the STEAM teacher Jay mentioned. And I would also support going to the town, asking them for help if that, if we need to resort to not hiring that teacher.
Thanks, Mike. Stephen?
No questions.
Okay. So I'm going to find my other piece of paper and follow the rule for a vote. Maria?
Yes.
Sarah Beth?
Sorry.
Yes.
Did you vote yes or no?
Yes.
Yes. Jay is a yes. Brooke?
Yes.
Yeah, we got nervous, Jen. We didn't hear. Steve? Stephen?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous. And board members, you can be assured that in our monthly meetings with the town, I will continue to advocate for our school and the needs that exist.
Thank you, Lynn. We have nine policies that have been on thirty-day review that are up for discussion and adoption this evening. Our last policy meeting was this past June fourteenth at seven PM. And we had an introduction and ongoing edit of our equity policy as part of our efforts to reach our school and district goals of building healthy alliances and to codify our commitment to meet all of our students where they are and advance their education equitably. So all board members should have received an email with the current drafts of the policy, asking for some input. You will also receive shortly some policies that our comparative DURB districts have also adopted. And most of those do follow the CADE guidelines, which is the policy that we have started with as well. So we are going to continue that discussion in our July meeting. And we invite participation from the board, from the community, and all input is welcome. So we will update you when that July meeting will be. But for tonight, we have nine policies that have been on review. And I'll go ahead and start with the first policy, which is four-one-one-eight. And four-two-one-eight, the harassment policy. And this policy updates, based on, updates our current policy based on the current Connecticut Association of Boards of Education recommendations.
Want to make a motion, Mary?
So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt policy four-one-one-eight dot one-one-three and four-two-one-eight dot one-one-three as revised.
Do I have a second? Jay? Is there, is there any discussion? Marsha, I'm going to repeat, the motion was made by Maria Madonik and seconded by Jay Day because I think I was on mute. Any discussion from the board? Okay, all those in favor can signify by raising their hands. It's unanimous. Thank you. Go ahead, Maria.
Okay. And next one is four-one-one-eight dot two-three-eight and four-two-one-eight dot two-three-eight. And this is the travel and self-quarantine during the COVID-nineteen pandemic policy. The sentence was stricken in this policy about self-quarantining due to the new CDC guidelines. So this policy brings in line with the new guidelines. And I'd like to make a motion that we adopt policy four-one-one-eight dot two-three-eight and four-two-one-eight dot two-three-eight. Travel and self-quarantine during COVID-nineteen pandemic as revised.
Do I have a second? That's my, oh, and that's also Maria with policy five-one-four-one dot eight-one?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion includes policy four-one-one-eight dot two-three-eight, four-two-one-eight dot two-three-eight, and five-one-four-one dot eight-one. Travel and self-quarantine during the COVID pandemic. The motion was made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay. Item three, policy nine-one-two-one. This policy brings into line our voting on the executive board to coincide with the new November elections as opposed to May elections. So I move that we adopt policies nine-one-two-one, nine-one-two-two, and nine-one-two-three as revised.
Do I have a second, Brooke? And just for the public's general information, nine-one-two-one regarded, is in regard to the chairperson. Nine-one-two-two is in regard to the vice chairperson. And nine-one-two-three is in regard to the secretary of the board. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lynn. Number four, we have policy nine-three-two-five dot four-three. Attendance at meetings via electronic communication. This proposed revision conforms to Connecticut Public Act twenty-two-three, which replaced twenty-one-three. I make a motion that we adopt policy nine-three-two-five dot four-three. Attendance at meetings via electronic communications as revised.
Have a second? Brooke? Any discussion? Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Onward, number five. This is policy six-one-seven-two dot one. This is a proposed revision to the Gifted and Talented Students Program. This revision aligns us with Connecticut Public Act nineteen dash one-eight-four and twenty-one dash one-nine-nine, which regulate aspects of the processes for identifying students as gifted and talented. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt policy six-one-seven-two dot one. Gifted and talented. Gifted and talented students program as revised.
Second, Brooke Hopkins. Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous.
Uh, next we have policy six-one-seven-one dot one. Uh, this is also a revision based on updating guidance from CAPE. So I would like to move that we adopt policy six-one-seven-one dot one, special education as revised.
Second, Jay? Just to mix it up a bit, you know? Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Jay Daya. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Uh, unanimous. Thank you.
Next we have policy six-one-six-three dot three. This is the policy regarding live animals in the classroom. And these proposed revisions are based on current recommendations from CAPE that also puts us in line with the American Disabilities Act. So I move that we adopt policy six-one-six-three dot three, live animals in the classrooms as revised.
Second, Brooke? Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. Any discussion? I'll just make a note for the public who are watching. You will see that the Board of Education is involved in lots of discussions, even that of live animals. So we're a very busy group. Please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous.
That one was my favorite one. All right, two more. Policy five-one-three-one dot one-one-one. Uh, this is our policy regarding video surveillance. Uh, the proposed revisions comply with current state and federal statutes. So I move that we adopt policy five-one-three-one dot one-one-one, video surveillance as revised.
Second, thank you, Brooke. Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? I'll, I'll just go back a minute and say that Jonathan just pointed out that it's live animals. We're not talking about the dead ones that beat your road schools. Okay, Maria, last one. We're getting punchy.
All right, our last policy tonight, thank you everyone for bearing with us, is policy five-one-two-five, student records and confidentiality. And these proposed revisions are based on CAPE recommendations. Um, and also Public Act seventeen dash six-eight and some various technical edits. So I move that we adopt policy five-one-two-five, student records confidentiality as revised.
Second, Brooke Hopkins. Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Maria, thank you. The, um, policy committee was busy.
And I'd also like to take this opportunity, if I can, Lynn, to thank Dr. Bob for his ongoing work with revising our policies. Uh, you know, there were other pressing issues during COVID and we had to revise them with them in a while because there are other very important things to do. So we appreciate all your efforts to share in bringing your policies and then contemplating our handbook up to current statutes. It was a large undertaking. We appreciate you putting this together for us.
Echo that? Yeah. Uh, three E, CAPE liaison report. Sarah Beth, Maria, do we have anything to report from CAPE?
Uh, I have two save the dates. Uh, the first I reported on before the CAPE pass convention will be November eighteen through nineteenth. Um, and then the second save the date is Wednesday, August eighteenth. Uh, from one-thirty P M to seven-fifteen P M is the twelfth annual summer leadership conference for the Boards of Education. It's going to be held in Essex, Connecticut, if anyone's able to attend. Um, and if anyone was curious, the CAPE did a legislative wrap-up after the last legislative session. There was a live taping of that. They have put the recording of that in the conference library for free. You don't need to register. You can click on it if you're interested. Uh, but that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you. So, um, I'll just remind the board that, uh, those CAPE conferences are part of our professional development as board members, and I encourage you to look at your calendars and see if you can, um, block out a little bit of time to attend one or both of them. Thanks. Uh, new business. Solar initiative. That would be you.
That's gonna, that's only gonna be me for a moment.
I was, I was muted. Just when I said I think it's important that you chunk, chunk out some time for, um, professional development and after that, that's you.
Yeah, and I, I'm going to turn this over to Richard in one minute, but it gives me an opportunity to say, there would have been lots of ways for an interim director of business to come in and, and do what was needed, but not really proactively think of new creative solutions. But Richard has come forth with a solar initiative. It's been mentioned already this evening. You have the material in your packet. It's going to be excellent, environmentally friendly. It's going to save the district money. And I'm going to turn it over to, to Richard to briefly explain, but I certainly endorse your supporting the application for the solar development. If you're thoughtful about like where it would be, I would just refer you to the map here in the middle that shows our existing grid and what the new grid would be.
Quite a bit has been said about the solar init- initiative, but let me go back and mention some things that haven't been discussed. Um, one, Titan gener- uh, the company that is proposed, uh, brought this proposal to my attention is Titan Energy. And they have worked with the town for many years on getting us contracts in electricity and natural gas uh, that are below market rates. So they've been very good about helping us move along. I should point out that there's a hundred and forty-seven KW solar panels on the roof currently. And we are paying, it's a power purchase agreement. We are paying eleven cents a kilowatt hour uh, for the, the power generated by those, um, panels. This proposal would add another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand KW of solar panels on the north end of the school after the roof has been replaced. And it is a power purchase agreement, which means we have, we have no outlay. Once the panels are installed and approved by U I, we would begin to pay four cents a kilowatt hour for the power generated. Between those panels and the existing panels and the microturbine, most of the year we will probably be generating most of our own power. And I believe that the estimate for the annual savings is in the vicinity of seventy thousand dollars a year. While the, uh, the Titan made a recommendation, they made a recommendation and their, their, uh, energy, uh, savings were based on typical power being generated. But by having the solar panels on the roof, we avoid the cost of transportation. Um, because your rates are generation and, uh, transportation, the power lines coming into the building. We would avoid that, and that brings up the, uh, the annual cost for this section of solar to, uh, about seventy thousand per year. And frankly, it's a very exciting proposal. Uh, the lowest cost I've seen in my career uh, for solar under a power purchase agreement is eight cents a kilowatt hour. So this is, this is a really outstanding deal. So are there any questions that I might be able to answer? Uh, that's part of the, the people who are putting the panels on there. Uh, but usually what they do is they degrade about somewhere between a half and one percent a year. Uh, but you don't generally clear snow off. They're tilted in such a way that they drain automatically and the sun usually melts. And even through the snow, they generate. I've, uh, I've tracked, uh, solar output at a couple of different school districts. And it's, it's amazing, uh, what you get even in, uh, December when the days are the shortest. That's, that's a, a, uh, before they put them on, there'll be a load, uh, analysis. But given the weight of, uh, power, uh, the panels, they're not very heavy. What you are concerned about generally when loading a roof is if you add a lot of insulation and you get a lot of snow built on it. Then you have to be very careful with that.
At our house, we have them and they, when they slide off when it's heavy and they hit something, it's like pretty powerful. So I'm guessing they'll factor that into everything too. So it's all like kids are playing outside in the snow and.
Well, the, the, you, we have flat roofs. So it's not like on the side of a house where they're tilted towards the sun and then it hits a roof that's sloped. Where they're going to be is the roofs are all flat. The, the panels are pitched, but they're on a stand and they would drain onto a flat roof. And then the drains would drain the water off the roof. I mean, you, you don't see the panels now. And if you want to see them, there's a, a photograph of the existing panels in my office. And it's, it's extensive and you don't even know they're there. Which is kind of nice because the, the building looks attractive and solar panels aren't all that attractive. Except for what they generate.
Dave, did you have a question?
I had two. So one question was about the impact on the roof. So something that worries me is does it increase our maintenance costs?
No.
Okay. And the next part is, does it degrade the roof in any way? So if we had a thirty-year life on the roof, does it take it down by a few years?
No, it doesn't, uh, what they're trying to do is step psycho, uh, putting up solar panels in roofs that are, that are either new or less than five years old. So the lifespan of, of, uh, the solar panels is twenty years. And most roofs now, while they guarantee twenty, usually get twenty-five, twenty-seven years. And we're putting up a, uh, single membrane roof, um, which, um, should last at least twenty-five years.
So my next question is, given that we're putting, we're almost covering the entire electricity needs of the school with this, does it make sense to at this time think about a battery backup system?
I've asked, um, Titan to look into two, two options. One is a battery backup, uh, battery bunker that, uh, essentially the solar panel would charge. And we would be able to use that power at night or when we've lost power. Um, but I'm just surprised that given the amount of time solar has been around, that there isn't a disconnect when, an automatic disconnect when you lose power from U I. Like if you had a generator at home, it would automatically switch over. They're looking into that too because I'm, I'm, understand that Tesla has come up with such a, um, un-innovation. And maybe it will be applied to, uh, solar panels as we move forward. But it would certainly make, uh, since we are designated as a shelter, it would make us, give us a lot more options. And during the summer if you're without power, I mean, at any given time, we have, uh, a lot of food in the freezer that if you lose power for any length of time, you can lose a lot of money, uh, in your cafeteria program. That's happened in a couple of school districts I've worked. But, um, for the most part, it would give us a chance to operate, um, without, um, people noticing that we're even without power.
I, I think this is a great initiative. I think the cost savings, I think to the town, to the taxpayer. I think this is an excellent initiative. Thank you, Richard, for bringing this forward.
My pleasure.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a quick question about, I mean, I think this is so impressive. I, I, you know, my one concern would be it almost seems too good to be true. So I'm just curious whether, did you speak with other solar providers as well? Were they providing sort of consistent? Consistent opportunities in terms of pricing? Cause it, I mean, I have, we have the solar panels personally. And the, in a sense, the cost per year per kilowatt escalates, you know, at a lower rate than we would anticipate, you know, U I would, would cost us. So it's just interesting to me that they're keeping it consistent over twenty years at four cents a kilowatt hour. Um, you know, so the, the question that comes to my mind, plus this is sort of a lower rate than we are getting at home for our solar panels. Sort of where are they making their money? And is there anything that could potentially come back at us down the road? My hope is no, but I just, I want to ask the question.
Well, I spent a good deal of time reading the power purchase agreement and, um, made them change a few things. But first of all, if at any given time, you could force them to take the solar panels off the roof. But I've been in several school systems where we've, they've been on for years and it's just, they're there. And there's very little maintenance. Uh, usually, uh, contractors have a, um, an internet line that goes into the system. So they get messages back from the panels if there are repairs and they just, uh, they dispatch their repair people to go and fix it. And, you know, the only time we know it is when they show up and Vito helps them get on the roof. But there's no cost involved. That's all part of the power purchase agreement. Now, how do they make money? Well, I believe most of us know or have heard that U I and EverSource has to have by a certain year, I think twenty-five percent of their power generated by renewable energy. They offer credits to companies that provide solar to them. There are tax credits along with what we're paying them. And obviously they're making money because it's not U I that this proposal is coming from. It's a company called Green Skies. So, um, and, and I don't know all the details about the tax credits and the, um, the energy credits they get back from U I. But it's obviously worth their while to put in the, uh, panels. And I will say that the amount of panels they're putting up is far less than what's up there now because of the technology has improved and each panel generates more electricity than what we have up there now. So it's, it's, there's a lot of factors involved here. I'm certainly no expert. But if the board at any given time wants to, um, talk to somebody, I'm sure that the, uh, a representative of Titan who's working with me on this would be happy to come and brief the board.
Do we know? Thank you. That was, that's great. And do we know if there are, uh, any other school districts or other institutions that Titan's working with? You know, that have installed these types of systems?
I don't know per se, but he said that the, the, uh, they've worked with, I think, thirty or thirty-five, uh, communities. And it isn't just us that work with Titan. The town, I think, initiated this.
I see.
And their buildings, uh, they're under the same contracts we are. Like for a generation, we're paying right now, uh, uh, point, uh, uh, zero-seven-nine cents a KW. Uh, which is well below, uh, the market. And we're doing, uh, we're doing just as well with natural gas.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Steven, there's, there's one aspect to this. Richard, the way I, I think it works, I know the finance side of this. So the Titan Energy may gets to the credit from U I, then it's securitized. And the banks come in and then they take the credits as well from the government. And so there's a credit on credit. This is how Tesla is making money. And so this is the same situation. They're offering you practically close to zero is the way I'm going to describe it for you to put this. So that U I meets their requirement and at the same, same time, the company that's installing it takes a tax credit. And they then securitize the loan, the amount that's coming into the banks and the banks then issue bonds on this. And these are triple A. We're a great town. They're triple A rated bonds. So everybody's sort of, you know, rolling through this. And for us, this is an excellent proposition. From what I see, the price is just incredible. Unlike you, I was a little concerned when I saw the numbers. So I did speak to a banker this last weekend. And I was told, you know, that's a very, very good number. Just make sure that that is the number you're getting. And the contract is for twenty-year guarantee. Now, one thing, um, Richard didn't mention is electricity prices keep going up.
Right.
So when I did my quick back of the envelope calculation, I said it was about a million dollars. That's me keeping everything constant. That's me saying electricity is still going to be twelve cents. We're only going to get it at four. That's me saying electricity is still going to be 12 cents. We're only going to get it at 4 cents, and me just working out the difference. So I think for us, if we can lock into something like this now, where the rates are where they're at, I think this is a great proposal. But again, like you, I'm a little skeptical that we're going to get the numbers, but I'd love to see those numbers and have Titan and their finance company come in and present to us.
I think I should clarify Titan's role. Titan is very much like a broker for insurance.
Okay.
They don't actually deal with the, they sort of match up the customer with the vendor. And Green Skies, I believe, is sort of a quasi-public entity. But they've been working in this field for many years. This is my first experience with them. But there are others in the field that I've worked with. But based on my discussion with Tony Genovese, these people have served you very well. At the end of the 20 years, it's their responsibility to take it down. It's part of the power purchase agreement. Or we could buy them if they're still functional. But when you re-roof, you got to obviously take them down before you re-roof. So there is some labor involved.
Say it again. Any other questions? Only because I was muted. Okay, so is there a motion? Go ahead, Jay.
Sure. All right, I move that we approve application of the Woodbridge Board of Education for solar development through Titan Energy as outlined.
Seconded, Jay Daya. Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Jay Daya. Any other further discussion? So this one, I'll roll the roll on. Maria?
Yes.
Sarah Beth? Jay?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Stephen? Mike?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I didn't hear. Aaron, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And I vote yes, it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. We are moving along. Public comment. If you have any public comment that you would like to make, please raise your hand in the participants list. Scrolling, scrolling, I don't see any. Do you, Dr. Bud? No public comment. Okay. So I have a comment to make. Since Dr. Jonathan Budd will be leaving the school district at the end of this month, and this will be his last official Woodbridge Board of Education meeting, and so I'd like to just take a moment or two to share some comments about Dr. Budd. The task of being a superintendent is not an easy one. But the job presents innumerable and unforeseen challenges during a pandemic. There were numerous times during the last 18 months that Jonathan and I would share the trials of him being a pandemic superintendent. However, amidst the task we never imagined, school employees, including him, would take on, Beecher Road School continued to shine under his leadership. During Dr. Budd's tenure, the school district moved forward to return to some sense of normalcy. All students resumed in-person learning while administrators continually monitored the health and safety of all school district constituents. The administrative team, under the leadership of Jonathan Budd, became quasi-medical experts. As they implemented health and safety protocols, monitored staff vaccination mandates, conducted contact tracing, and oversaw the weekly COVID testing of students and staff who chose to participate. And that's all the things that Dr. Budd shared in his safe return report tonight. And all of this was accomplished while carrying out the normal duties required when overseeing a school district. District and school goals that encouraged continual growth and areas of improvement were set with the desired outcome of educational excellence. Again, tonight, we heard about that. Jonathan also coordinated and oversaw the beginning work in developing a five-year strategic plan for the district. This work provided the first steps in the process of building a curriculum of curiosity-driven learning and puts us in a position to develop necessary and appropriate action plans. We heard about that tonight. Jonathan worked tirelessly in assisting the board in revising outdated policies and adding policies based on new legislation. As you saw tonight, nine of them came forward just this month. And that was something that Jonathan started the moment he walked in the door and he continued for the 18 months that he was here. It's a huge amount of work keeping up with legislative changes and the necessity of policy changes. And he was on top of that constantly. He has been a driving force in working with others to reassess and plan and develop a plan for the district's capital needs. We talked about that tonight. He has diligently monitored the security of the building to assure that every individual, student and adult alike, is safe every day. He has managed personnel issues, has worked with union groups to collectively bargain fair agreements, and has hired some amazing staff members. And these are just a few sampling of Dr. Budd's accomplishments. And so Jonathan, on behalf of the Woodbridge community, the entire Woodbridge community, I want to thank you for your contributions that you have made to Beecher Road School and wish you much success as you continue on your professional journey.
Thank you very much.
So Jonathan's still here till the end of June. He'll still be talking to me. He hasn't gotten rid of me yet.
And we should say, there was a moment early in the year when I used to call you every time we had to put out a call.
Indeed.
We would laugh because early months of September, October was usually Sunday. And I'd say, oh, we've got to put out of that. But notice how quickly the regular daily calls stopped when we hit about
Right.
100 a week.
Right.
Glenn has always been very supportive as a board chair, and so have the board members, both on the prior board and this board. And it doesn't make it any, it makes it much easier to do your job superintendent with a board who is supportive and thoughtful and responsive to questions and concerns. I appreciate you and all your predecessors for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. And I will just tell you that my favorite response to Jonathan's calls or texts on Sunday night were so I kept thinking I'm going to get an indentation in my forehead. We had so many of them. But I have to say, Jonathan, you were always so upbeat. And you always said, you know, we got this, we've got this. And that gave us a lot of confidence that the kids were really being taken care of, the people in the building were really being taken care of. And so I thank you for that. Okay. The board will enter into executive session in accordance with state statute for the purpose of discussion concerning the appointment of a public employee as well as discussion concerning security strategy, the deployment of security personnel and/or devices affecting public safety. So for the public's information, action may be taken when the board returns to public session following the executive session. So can I have a motion to go into executive session inviting Dr. Budd and a candidate to join the board? Maria, second. Brooke. Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Brooke Hopkins. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.